Thank you for coming. I would like to note that all board members except Board Director Oliva are in attendance this evening. I'd ask you to remove your caps and please join me, stand and join me when I touch the link.
(inaudible) (inaudible)
Thank you. Before we begin, I just want to note that a closed session that had been posted to occur after tonight's meeting is, has been canceled. So, just for everyone's information, thank you. Would someone like to move approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Thank you. We'll begin with recognition of students, staff, and public this evening. First of all, we have an invitation to The Sound of Music from Oak Grove Middle School, and that will be directed by Sean Stelton and Brian Blessing. And I'd like to invite them to the podium to tell us a little bit about it.
(inaudible) Thank you. My name is Sean Stelton, and I am one of the co-directors with Brian Blessing of this year's musical, The Sound of Music. The process started back in November. We had about 130 students that auditioned to be a part of the show. We were able to take about 90, so we had a good chunk of them that were in here. And we've been working really hard since right after the winter break in January, working most every day after school, you know, working on lines and choreography and just putting forth a really great effort. And these kids have been doing a fantastic job this year, and we're really looking forward to our performances, in which Brian Blessing will talk about right now.
And our musical tradition, we're just so thrilled about every year and looking forward to this time. And we do seven performances next week. Just over 3,000 people will be here. A combination of elementary students from Westwood and Hillcrest, Oak Grove students here, all of our students at Oak Grove will get to see the shows. We do four ticketed performances as well, and we also do a senior citizen matinee, which is free for senior citizens. And there's coffee, juice, and rolls served that the students will all be serving as well. And so, we hope to see you at one of the performances. Next week, Wednesday, March 18th, at 10:00 a.m. is the Senior Citizen Show. And then Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night at 7:00. And Saturday, also, the 21st is also a 3:00 o'clock matinee. And you're more than welcome to come to any of the performances. And so, we had a few students that were around today. We wanted them to come sing a little iconic song for you from the show, and they'll be accompanied by our companyist, Judy Cooper.
next Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. You're waiting.
And Wednesday for us to hold the votes. Next, I'd like to recognize the Jefferson and Kennedy Nordic Skier, Tamer Mishy Richter. He placed fifth in state, and I would like to call upon Coach Jack Collis. Tell us about him.
Good evening. Well, how do I follow that?
Yeah.
Maybe I'll break out into the song. Well, good evening, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to recognize the accomplishments of Tamer Mishy Richter. Unfortunately, he can't be with us tonight. Tamer, along with Zach Hattersden Jr. at Jefferson High School, is skiing in the Junior National Races. They were selected to represent the Midwest at those races out in Truckee, California. So, he couldn't be here with us tonight. Along with that honor, Tamer finished fifth at this year's very cold state meet, having gotten there by winning the Section III championship race by almost two minutes. He was the captain of our team, was also selected as all-conference, finishing second only to Zach in the conference championships. He has accomplished all of this this year while maintaining a 3.7 grade-point average at Normandale Community College, where he takes PSEO classes. All his coursework is done there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Tamer.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you very much.
Next, we're going to recognize the Jefferson Competition Cheer Team, who placed first in state and third at Nationals. And I'd like to call upon the coaches, if they're here.
You guys have to do a cheer.
Thank you so much for having us here tonight. We have majority of our team members with us. There's 30 total on the team that compete. This year, we took first place at state and also were awarded Grand Champs, which is the highest total score of the day from every division. We first started with a semi-competition round, where we then advanced on to finals later that day. And then our finals performance, which was by far our best performance of our whole entire season, awarded us the first place later that night, and also Grand Champion title, which is the first time we've ever received this. So, it was a great accomplishment for the team. A week later, we competed at Nationals, which is down in Orlando, Florida. And on Saturday, we started with our preliminary competition round. We had another great performance, and that gave us one of the top two highest scores, moving us straight to finals. And we were able to skip the semifinal round, which was later that night, which was another first-time accomplishment for this group. The next day, we competed in our final round, which was Sunday, and with that great performance, we placed third. So, overall, it was an amazing finish to a great season that we had. We want to thank our school and the school board for continuing to support us and for allowing us to take this trip down to Nationals. It's something that's very important to us, so we all appreciate your support. Thank you for having us here today.
Thank you, and congratulations. I'll just quick read the names while she's passing out the certificates. Hannah Bach, Madeline Berg, Raquel Bourgeois, Rachel Brown, Hannah Brua, Rissa Cobb, Mackenzie Coleman, Carsten Gonzalez, Jalen Hamilton, Ellie Hausstedt, Jasmine Jackson, Kennedy Comer, Jordana Machado, Madeline Mayworm, Allison Maney, Maya Matsky, Morgan McCallough, Paige Obermeyer, Hannah Page, Gabrielle Peery, Madeline Salden, Taylor Shoup, Lauren Simonette, Caitlin Tanner, Caitlin Thayer, Sadie Warren, Haley Wheeler, Jamie Wallner, or Landria Woods. So, congratulations to all the girls and your coaches. The Jefferson and Kennedy Scholastic Art Competition. We have some Silver and Gold Key Awards. I don't see Principal Grubner. Oh, he is. Oh, yeah, there he is. I'd like to invite Principal Grubner from Jefferson to come up and introduce the Jefferson and Kennedy students. I just want to tell you that the student artists from Bloomington, Jefferson, and Kennedy High School have received recognitions for their entries in the 2015 Minnesota Scholastic Art Awards. Minnesota Scholastic Art Awards is a statewide regional affiliate of the National Scholastic Art Awards that recognizes Minnesota's young artists and offers scholarships to graduating high school seniors. The competition is open to all Minnesota students in grades 7 to 12. This year's Minnesota Scholastic Art Awards program drew over 2,900 individual and portfolio entries from across the strait, state, excuse me. Jefferson's Nicole Jacobson and Kennedy's Sarah Amma received the Gold Key Awards for their work, and Kennedy's Travis Jackson, Ann Nelson, and Samantha Tarnowski received Silver Key Awards. Gold and Silver Key Award winners were recognized at a ceremony held in the University of Minnesota's Weisman Art Museum. Principal Grubner?
Good evening. I don't have much else to say. That's all right. That's all right. This is Travis, and Travis is a Kennedy student. And Travis, congratulations on your artistic work. And what'll happen now is that the Gold Key winners will move on to the national competition, which occurs later in the spring. And their works will be entered in that competition. So, again, congratulations to Travis and our other artists.
Next, we have a special recognition for some life-saving measures. And I'd just like to say a few words. It is said that courage is not the absence of fear, but rather the judgment that something else is more important than fear. Tonight, we're recognizing two very courageous members of our team for extraordinary personal action in saving the life of one of their fellow staff members. Joining us tonight to share the details of their heroic actions and to present a special certificate of commendation is Jefferson High School's Principal, Kevin Grubner.
Thank you, Chair Bartolata. Shar, Judy, and Dave, would you all come up here, please? Early in an afternoon, early afternoon one day in early November, Shar Colbert, one of our longtime employees at Jefferson, Shar is a hallway and parking lot supervisor with us at Jefferson, Shar suffered a severe heart attack. And last week, Shar was able to rejoin us at school after all this time, and it's wonderful to have her back with us. And Shar was able to rejoin us because of the quick thinking and life-saving efforts on the part of Judy Bellmore, our school nurse, and our Dean of Students, Dave Musso. They worked tirelessly for a long time, performing CPR for Shar, until the Bloomington Police, a team of police officers from the Bloomington Police Department arrived, and the leader of that group was Officer John Martin. So, tonight, we're glad and very appreciative that the board is recognizing Dave and Judy for their efforts. So, anybody have anything you want to say? Shar, Judy, Dave?
Yeah, I'm Charlotte Colbert, and I'm the miracle person. Everyone that's read my charts said I wasn't supposed to be here. They said that because I was out for the amount of time that I was out, to come out of it with no brain damage or anything, it's a miracle, you know? And I truly feel like it was a miracle. And most people have like a hero, but I have a shero and a hero. And I love these guys. I mean, we're just like a family there anyway, so, I mean, what they did was what we do all the time, you know? We work together, and we help one another, and that's the way it is at Jefferson. So, I just want to say, thank you, guys. I love you. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for you. So, thank you so much.
I just, Dave and I want to tell you all how humbled we are to have had the privilege of being part of that effort for you, and it really was a privilege. Thank you. You are a miracle. Thank you. We appreciate your work. Glad to see Shar back at work.
Yeah. I couldn't wait to get back to work. I couldn't even sleep tonight before I went back to work. Yeah, I missed everybody so much. And then they hit me so I couldn't drive, so I couldn't even pop in on them. But thank you.
Well, glad you're back and healthy. Thank you. Is there anyone here from the government classes here at Jefferson? Seeing none. I will ask if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the school board on an item that is not on the agenda. Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on. Would someone like to move Part A on the agenda, please?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. All in favor of Part A, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? No. Thank you. That brings us to Part B. First is a bid award for the Jefferson High School roof replacement. And our Executive Director of Finance, Fred Zepkovich, is here. Would someone like to make that motion?
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 accept the McPhillips Brothers Roofing St. Paul, Minnesota, bid of $722,000 to re-roof Jefferson High School and approve the contract to accomplish this work.
Sir, second?
Second.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to it?
Chair Bartolata, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members, this is part of our 1516 All Facility Plan. The process has been reviewed by our Consultant on Roofing and Parking Lots and the rest, has reviewed this recommendation and is in favor of moving forward with this project.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Hearing none. All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Next, we'll have a bid award regarding Jefferson High School and Westwood Elementary All Facility Security Projects, oh, and security projects, excuse me.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 accept the following bids for facility projects at Jefferson High School and Westwood Elementary as identified on the sheet, and authorizes administration to enter into contracts with the above vendors to accomplish this work. All the bids, and reject all bids for one of the projects. So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
This is another project for the summer. It's a combination of funding sources, both all facilities and our capital projects levy, which is our technology and safety referendum dollars. The request to reject one of the items, the consultants in receiving the bids felt that the scope was not met and the budget was not met on one of the scopes of the project. They feel that they can get a better quote for that by having it separate from the original bid. So, they'll be rebidding it. It's not a big part of the project. It should be able to get those quotes, and the project should be on time.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the bid tabulation sheet here, and I like to look through them all, and I'm looking at number two, and it has three different bids on there. One at $15,000, one at $17,000, and one at $119,000. Is that a typo, or is that, is that correct? That someone came in 10 times higher?
I believe that that was what the bids were. I mean, I can go back and check and make sure, but my understanding is that's what the bids were for the different areas.
Okay. Do you ever see anything like that, where one's just like 10 times higher? Why even bother bidding if they're not going to be competitive?
Well, a lot of times, especially in this type of environment, is a lot of people don't think there's going to be a lot of bidders, so they'll go out and throw a high bid, and hopefully they get it. They already have a lot of work being done during the summer, so all of a sudden, they feel that if they're going to do something else, they can hire, subcontract the work, and still make a good profit off of it.
It looks like a good profit. Good thing they're not getting it from us. All right, thanks.
That's a healthy profit.
Anyone else? Hearing no further questions, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Thank you. Third, we have a bid award for Kennedy High School and Valley View Middle School All Facility and Security Projects. Someone like to move that?
I'll read that one.
Thank you.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 accept the following bids for facility projects at Kennedy High School and Valley View Middle. There are 16 different bids, and the total on this is $3,448,008, and authorizes administration to enter into contracts with the above vendors to accomplish this work.
Second. Thank you.
This is another project for the summer that entails both security and all facilities. As you'll notice and moving forward, what we're trying to do with a lot of our bids to try to do economies of scale is try to group different projects together, east-side, west-side type projects, hopefully to get a better overall bid within the process. So, it's similar. This is also the project where we rejected the mechanical bid, the board did. We redid it. We actually got three bidders the next time, and we also saw substantial improvement in the bidding process based on that.
Thank you. Does anybody have any further questions? Hearing none. All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, we have a resolution regarding the 201516 vendors and rates for district group insurance.
Madam Chair. Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 approves of vendors and rates for district group insurance for the 12-month period from July 1, 2015, to June 30, 2016, per the attached memo. And it has a list of our vendors. And then, further, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 per its organizational meeting of January 12, 2015, authorize the superintendent or his designee to execute documents within the authorized budget as appropriate to the daily operations of the school district.
Second. Thank you.
Mary was going to be here tonight to be able to present this, but since I was involved in the Labor Management Meeting that decided on this process, Les asked me to present it tonight. What this is, is part of the new law for the, for health insurance, we are required to get approval of the vendors that we will be using before we can set rates. So, what this is, is before what we've done is we've brought to the board the vendors and then what the premiums were going to be for the next year. Those premiums will come at a later date, but we need to get board approval per the new law beforehand of which vendors we are going to be using. So, what we're looking for is approval of what the Labor Management Committee voted unanimously, and I'd ask Don or Tom if they wanted to add anything since they were both at that meeting.
We're staying the same with everything, right? Correct? We're still, we're preferred one for our health and Delta for dental, and IMED for vision, nothing's changing, and the actual, the renewal rate actually went down, which is a good thing, so. I don't know if you have anything else to add?
No.
So, question was, these are all the same vendors that we have used in the past?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? None.
Thank you.
Next, we have a policy review, the first reading of Policy 452 Jury Duty. Would someone like to make the motion? Thank you.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves Policy 452 Jury Duty.
Second.
Thank you. And our Superintendent will address this.
Madam Chair, our Executive Director of Human Resources is Mary Burrows, is sick today, so I'm covering for her. This policy was last reviewed seven years ago by the board. This is not a state mandatory policy. Administration is recommending only one change, changing from classified employee to district employee. Should cover all our employees. I've asked our legal counsel to review this to ensure that it's in compliance with our collective bargaining agreements. Have you had a chance to do that?
I was just looking. I couldn't find anything in the teacher's collective bargaining agreement, so.
It's okay. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions regarding this?
Yeah, I've got a question. I mean, we are the classified employees. What's the difference between a district employee and a classified employee?
A classified employee is any employee that doesn't need a certification or license to do the job, and the district employee would be all employees, including non-unit licensed.
Okay. Sounds like a good change.
Yeah. Everybody gets to go to jury duty.
Does that include the school board?
I went two years ago.
Did you get paid?
I did.
Minimum wage, right?
Whatever the ratio was.
It was federal, so it was $32 or something.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of this first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have our second reading on Policy 510.3, Activities and Other Student Fees.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the second reading of Policy 510.3, Activities and Other Student Fees.
Second.
Thank you. Our Assistant Superintendent Chris Blanix is here to discuss this with us.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the board. Tonight, we are bringing back for a second reading Policy 510.3, Activities and Other Student Fees. There have been no changes or updates made to the policy since the board completed your first reading on February 23rd, so administration is recommending approval.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you. And then we'll have revised Policy 533 Wellness. Would someone like to move that resolution? Thank you, Director Carr.
Madam Chair, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 approves the second reading of Policy 533 Wellness.
Second. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, we also have the second reading of Policy 533 Wellness. Again, there have been no changes or updates made to the policy since its first reading on February 23rd, so administration is also recommending approval of this policy.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed? None. Thank you. Next, we'll have a resolution regarding Policy 455, the recognition of service upon separation. Go ahead.
Result that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves no change to Policy 455, recognition of service upon separation.
Second.
Thank you. Superintendent, I'm sorry.
This policy was last reviewed 10 years ago. This is not a state mandatory policy. If this policy, if this, no change is recommended to this policy, therefore, if it's approved by the board, this will be the only reading of this policy.
Any discussion? Question?
Madam Chair. I just want to say, I think it's a great thing that we're recognizing the employees for their service to the district, so. So I like this particular event.
Good. If there's no further discussion, all in favor of that resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, thank you. That brings us to board member reports. Who would like to go first?
Let somebody else go first.
You go.
All right, I'll, I'll, I'll go first. Last Tuesday, attended a intermediate 917 board meeting and we went over a question of leasing a new building for one of our programs. It's in dire need of a, of a refreshed look. Looks like we have found a place that, that's suitable. Attended the district-wide, I think is the right way to describe it, PTSA council meeting. Was over at the works. Just want to say a quick thanks to all the PTSA reps for all the work that they do in, in our schools. We would certainly be lost without them. I had an opportunity to visit Transportation Building. It was the last day, when I went there, it was the last day for, Tom, is it Ostrom? Am I getting close?
Eschrick.
Eschrick, yeah, okay. Ace. It was his last day, so I stopped in to say hello and, and goodbye all in one. And also had a chance to meet Bill Martin, who was a new assistant over there at the Transportation Building. And had a chance to listen and learn where he came from and, and share some of his, or have him share some of his passion for doing things the right way. So it was nice to meet him.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I can go.
All right.
Unless you have something to do, I can let you go first. Okay, well, last Thursday, Don and Tom and I attended the joint legislative conference, the MSBA one, and we got to be there for the whole day and we, well, the reason why we went there was to hear everything that was the big key issues right now related to education, to cities, anything that was affecting, you know, counties, schools, townships, et cetera. We got to hear an overview from the Senate Majority Leader and also the Speaker of the House. And we also got to hear the remarks from Governor Mark Dayton. And we went to a series of breakout sessions as well. Well, the main focus for us there was, well, the main focus in general right now has to do with education, transportation, and what is that? Road construction. So those are kind of like the, the very hot topics right now when it comes to budget and from the surplus that we have right now. Now, the budget forecast, what we're seeing right now is that the surplus had an increase and so right now it's one point eight hundred and sixty-nine billion dollars. We also got an update from, from Grace Geller here and Dennis, Denise Trichet, is that how you say it? Yeah, the two ladies from, that come and talk from MSBA about legislative issues. Let me just give you kind of a general idea of what we heard about the, the, the budget forecast. So as you know, the initial, the governor's initial budget was, it's a, it's a one percent for the formula. And there's also a certain amount of money, money for universal day, everyday pre-K. Some money that it would be assigned for school breakfast, EL funding, that will go from six to seven years. Also unassigned money for reading corps and regional centers of excellence and positive behavior in schools. What we heard is that pretty soon we will be hearing from the governor's office regarding how much money will be assigned for all of those, how much money will be going to education. That's something that's not for sure known as today. There's also a Senate, we got to hear a little bit about the Senate plans and, you know, one of the big issues, or one of the big ones that we see out there right now is still the, the four-year-old universal pre-K education program. So that's still something that's going on, that's being discussed, that, like I said before, the hot topics right now. We got to be there also for part of the, of the House session. And the discussion at that moment, the bill that was discussed was the House File Two that has to do with teacher tenure, licensure reform, and it's this bill that targets teacher quality. Now, that bill passed on Thursday night and that will be going to the Senate. So we'll be hearing about that soon, too. I don't know if there's anything else, Tom, and Don want to add to that?
Just a little bit, one thing that I, that I enjoyed about their platform is that they're asking on the formula, instead of the one percent that the governor's recommending, MSBA is actually recommending a five point one percent, which they say would cover the inflationary gap, which is a term that I like them using over the last ten years because we, though what we've been funded has not kept up with inflation. And so five point one percent would make up that difference. So when we met with our senators, we had opportunity with both of them, we told them both that a one percent increase isn't sufficient and, and we need more than that. And we also had an opportunity to talk to Senator Torres Ray and I mentioned that as well, that one percent isn't enough. And so, so I think that was important. Hopefully we can get more than that one percent so that we can, you know, actually fund our district and other districts throughout the state because I think everyone's having the same problems, not just us.
I forgot to mention that we did visit for a little while with Senator Melissa Wigland and also with Senator Melissa Franzen. And like Tom says, we made sure to let them know, you know, how much it is that we actually need in the formula, the increase in the formula. I also attended the MSBA. Did you want to say something else about that? Joint, yeah, go ahead before I. I'll wait to my report. Oh, okay. Yeah, I got to attend the AMSD conference on Friday morning where all those issues were again addressed. And there was somebody from MSBA that also made sure to let everybody know what it is that MSBA would like to see for increase in the formula. And the concerns that, you know, members, board members in general in different districts have about universal pre-K. Thank you, that's all.
Do you hear any, was there any consensus about the, if it's a pre-K or is it pretty much all over the place or?
You know, there doesn't, it doesn't seem to be like a, a mutual agreement, a general consensus from all board members. I know that people are talking about all main concerns and one of the biggest concerns is, okay, this is great, but what about space? You know, what are we going to do about space? That would be the main concern. And so everybody's a little bit reluctant about saying whether or not they support it or not.
Director Sorm, did you have a report?
Sure, I can, I would, my only report would be that I'm, I'm going to ask if it would be all right with the other members of the subcommittee on the superintendent evaluation, if we meet next Monday at six o'clock to go over some of the forms that we have. And then, because then, whatever we decide, then we bring back to the full board for, for the, their authorization for the evaluation, rather than just the subcommittee doing the work. It was recommended that we have the whole board participate. So I think we just need to have a brief meeting before our six-thirty board development, just to meet if that's okay with the other members. Six o'clock next Monday.
Sure.
Okay, then. Then we'll make a, make it official and have it posted then. Thank you. That concludes my report.
All right, that was good. Don.
Well, first of all, I attended the Cheetah Rally at Valley View Elementary. And during that rally, they use that time to recognize students for, they have different categories for kind of outstanding students, different areas, part of their PBIS, Positive Behavior, supports that they do throughout the month. And one of the things that I thought was really great about that is if your child gets recognized and the parents get a special note home. And so it was great to see all the parents that came or grandparents or other family members that were there to support the kids as they got the recognition and their little beaming faces as they were all waving to their family. It was very, very cute. But then I also went on to Oak Grove Elementary, had a Culvers Custard Event, I guess you could say, in recognition of their reading for the month. And I just wanted to thank Mr. Fong for donating the custard and serving and stayed and served to every student that came through the lunchroom that afternoon. So he was, he was dishing custard for quite a while. So we do really appreciate his support of our, our students. The District Diversity Advisory did not meet this month because I guess too many of the teachers were busy with conferences, so there was a conflict, so they, they did not meet. I did attend the PTSA meeting that was at the works. Program there was mostly, Rick Hoffman did some review of, or updating of family engagement. And then there was conversation about the summer programs again, the same changes to the new program from what we had before. And the main thing that, about that is people should know that there's not busing anymore from one program to the other. So people should be aware of that when they sign their kids up. And I also attended the joint legislative conference and as Director Corman said, we visited with some of our local elected people that represent Bloomington. We also, I, in the breakouts, I listened to the, there was a summary and report on, and recommendations of the School Facilities Financing Work Group, so that was interesting. And then later after that, Representative Kim Norton came and talked a little bit about some of the bills she had related to schools and school finance, et cetera. And then while we were divided up in the afternoon into different groups, while they were listening to the House, I was with another group that got to meet with Senator Hoffman and Senator Bonoff also that afternoon. And I would say the message of pretty much every, every meeting that I went to was one percent is not enough. That was the message they definitely were hearing from MSBA.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, hearing no one else, I'll just tell you that I attended the Community Education Services 2015 Award of Excellence presentation on March 5th, at which time outstanding staff members Cassie Merham and Bill Rasmussen were recognized, outstanding support staff members Judy Harrington and Shelley Mattson were recognized, and Alex Locke is a community education leader. And the outstanding program of the year was the Family Literacy Academy. And the community education partner was Normandale Community College and their volunteers. It was a very nice program and it was good to recognize those people for their outstanding work. I'd also like to tell you that I attended the Bloomington United for Youth meeting. And coming up, I believe it's Thursday evening from five to seven-thirty, is the Teen Job Fair. So any youth out there that are looking for jobs should go up to the Civic Plaza and look around and see what they could find to do for the summer, keep them busy. One other thing is the Box City Vigil is coming up that Bloomington United for Youth has been a partner and sponsor of in the past. It's going to be May 8th at five-thirty PM. Location will be at the Oak Grove Presbyterian Church parking lot. And you can go online to BloomingtonYouth.org and you'll find the registration form and more information about that. And it's to support youth homelessness, or not support it, but support.
Raise awareness.
Yes, thank you. Raise awareness for youth homelessness. Thank you. And that concludes my report. And so the superintendent is next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The School Board will be holding a professional development session on March 16 at six-thirty PM here at the Educational Services Center. Teamwork International President Dennis Chisbrow will be the facilitator. And the topic for this professional development session is operational oversight. On March 26, the Board Legislative Committee and the Board will be hosting a legislative forum here at the Educational Service Center at eight AM. And the public is welcome, in fact, the public is encouraged to attend.
What was, what was the date again?
Three twenty-six.
March 21st.
Twenty-first, Saturday.
Eight AM.
Saturday.
Saturday.
That is televised.
It is televised.
Yes.
The Education Foundation of Bloomington is a not-for-profit organization that is separate from the school district. Their mission is to enhance the learning experience of Bloomington Public School students by acquiring and distributing resources not available through public funding. They will be hosting a golf tournament called Chip In For Schools Golf Tournament on July 29th at the Dwan Country Club, the golf course, in the afternoon. The proceeds from this tournament will go to scholarships and stipends for students. Last thing is Tom Holton, our Executive Director of Community Services for the past fifteen years, has announced his retirement to take effect at the end of this school year. In the coming months, there'll be many opportunities to say goodbye and to wish him well, but I'm sure on, right now, I'm going to wish Tom well and on behalf of the School Board and the community for his great work. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Anything else? I do, oh, go ahead.
I just want to add one more thing, just to clarify, and I think the superintendent can correct me if I'm wrong, but going back to what is being asked for the formula, you know, what we're hearing from, from the Senate also is one percent, right? From MSBA is five percent and from AMSD is three percent. So they're all a little bit different. But one thing I forgot to tell you about AMSD is some of the priorities that they, they have for closing the achievement gap is not only the increase in the formula by the three percent, but also a investment in a school readiness programs rather than the, this universal pre-K for three, four-year-old kids. Also, the increased funding to allow additional school districts to join the, the teacher professional pay system, the QCOM, more money towards that, so that there is an evaluation program that is better aligned and that it's pretty much consistent in all school districts. Also, the, the same for ELL, the expansion of more funding to seven years, that was, that's part of also of their priorities. And the last one is to allow greater flexibility with compensatory revenue to address the local needs and challenges.
Thank you. The one thing I forgot is our MSBA breakfast that we're hosting here next Tuesday morning. If you can't attend, I guess, why don't you let me know because otherwise I'll just plan on all you, everyone coming. Seven AM here in this boardroom.
Seven AM.
People like to get to work. We're usually done by nine.
I think your kids are at six to get it set up.
If there's nothing else, this meeting's adjourned.